I'd like to call the meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. It appears that we have nine members present. Has anyone seen Ken Willard?
He's standing out in the hall.
Oh, okay. So all members are present. That's good. Our first order of business would be to approve the agenda for the day. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor, raise your right hand. That would be a nine zero vote with Ken Willard out of the room. Before we go into our formal agenda, Dale had an announcement he wanted to make.
I just want, yesterday we passed out the proposed agenda for the Performance and Efficiency Committee. Remember yesterday? Well, that's being changed substantially. And I know one of the big issues is the organizations, educational-related organizations, are going to be invited to participate in that meeting. And we're not involved in that directly or indirectly, I know, well, maybe indirectly. But so it's being changed substantially. I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you. We always appreciate your sharing information with us, Dale. The first item on our agenda is to act on the recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission. And I know that Kalen is here with us today. So Kalen, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. On page 119 of your materials packet, you have the recommendation from the PPC. It includes two recommendations from hearings that were conducted in June and one that is a carryover from May. And if you have any questions about any of these three, I welcome the questions down.
I believe we need to deal with the first two, Adam McDermott and Cameron Shea, separately because they require a little different action than Laci Dunn since it was on our agenda at the last meeting. So are there questions about either of the first two? Yes, Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The one on Adam McDermott, I may be missing it, but was his original charge a misdemeanor?
I believe so. I would have to look back at the actual document.
Just from what I see, it looks like it was probably a misdemeanor, but I just want to do.
Yeah, let me, actually, I have to look further back in my packet to actually get to the original documentation for that. So you'll need to give me just a minute.
Sure.
Let me see. It is McDermott. We might have to ask Scott if he can provide some assistance in this regard, possibly getting that documentation.
They were all misdemeanors.
Okay. Well, then there's the answer.
Okay.
I didn't hear what he said.
They were all misdemeanors originally.
Oh, okay. So that answers that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding Adam McDermott or Cameron Shea? Deana Horst.
Thank you. And I'd like to, at least on the McDermott, it talks about somewhere on number four, that the applicant has provided evidence of rehabilitation since the time of offense. What's considered during that? What is that evidence?
Well, that's always something that is, I would say, a very, very subjective judgment on the part of the members of the commission. One of the factors that's taken into consideration is the age of the person at the time of the offense, the nature of the offense, and what has occurred since then. He was 18 years old at the time of the offense and has, since that time, completed a college degree and in every way that we could see evidence of, has really conducted his life in a way that indicated to us that he is very unlikely to reoffend.
Carolyn Campbell.
I have a question. Can we vote on these separately? Because I'm not voting the same way.
Okay, that would be fine. Sally Cobble.
Madam Chairman, I was going to move a motion that maybe with, since Carolyn would like to vote on these separately, I was going to move that we accept the findings of the committee. But I could.
Well, let's start with Adam McDermott, then. In the case of Adam McDermott, to accept the findings of the Professional Practices Commission, would that be okay?
That'd be fine. I'll take them one at a time.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Kathy Bush. Is there further discussion? Then all in favor, raise your right hand. Let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor. And those opposed? Did I count wrong? I counted wrong. Were there eight hands up?
Yes.
Okay. You forgot yourself. Eight in favor and two opposed, Roberts and Willard. Now, I would entertain a motion to approve the findings for Cameron Shea. Moved by Sally Cobble. Seconded by, is there a second on Cameron Shea's behalf? Seconded by Janet Waugh. Discussion on that one? Questions? Then all in favor, raise your right hand. I'm going to count right this time. Keep your hands up so I can see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor. And opposed, right hands please, two, Roberts and Campbell. Thank you very much. Now, in the case of Laci Dunn, we did not accept the findings of the Professional Practices Commission last time. So today, we need to vote to either approve or deny the license request. Kathy Bush.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this particular.
Okay. Is there discussion? Well, first, is there a motion? Either way. Carolyn Campbell.
Excuse me. I move that we approve the application for Laci Dunn.
Thank you. It's been moved to approve the application of Laci Dunn. Is there a second to the motion? I need to get, seconded by Sally Cobble. I don't have my hand raising thing up. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the application of Laci Dunn. Are there questions or is there discussion? Ken Willard.
Madam Chair, I need to be refreshed on the circumstances on Laci Dunn. Do we have that in front of us?
I believe that the packet included all of the materials.
I'm sorry. Okay, yeah.
That were submitted to the commission.
Are there other questions? Then all in favor of the motion to approve the application to allow Ms. Dunn to receive her substitute license, an initial license. Raise your right hand, please. Okay. I see one, two, three, four, five, six in favor. Those opposed? One in opposi, oh, one, two in opposition.
Madam Chair, I've chosen to abstain. I know I have a relationship with someone who has this.
And Steve Roberts abstaining and Kathy Bush recusing herself. So thank you very much. So that is settled now. And thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Sally and Jim are going to give us a Communications Committee report.
Well, hopefully, this will be short. And first of all, well, second, you were asked to upgrade your bios and several of you have done that. Thank you. If you're, you know, you can update those at any time, but we would certainly encourage you at this time, you know, to take care of that. Within the bio pages, the links have been added to connect people to organizations such as NASB, Acacia, Kansas Volunteer Commission, Ed Commission of the States and such. You know, we're just creating more links on our site to make it more user-friendly for constituents as well as for us. So if you have, you want to find one of those, those are now on our site. In the packet, you also provided a list of department heads, the schools of education. We're again offering the availability of speaking to pre-service, to faculties, to students, student groups on colleges and universities to get our message out about the role of the state board and dealing with the issues and topics of the day. We've had a couple of requests that are sitting there, and I know that this is only a request. It's not a mandated obligation that you have, but if you would wish to speak to these groups of students and faculty, we would encourage you to do that. KU, American Nazarene, Wichita State, Emporia have all requested, made requests for speakers from the board. And if you would like to be the one that Peggy will contact them and say you'll contact them to speak for them, then that would be fine. And if you want to contact universities or colleges on your own, that'd be fine. I've already talked to friends and Newman in Wichita. We'll be talking to Southwestern since they're in my area. And we're negotiating times and places to do this. So it's a good way for us to get our message out to pre-service teachers and to faculties on who we are, what we do, what our role is, as well as issues for licensure, you know, and topics that are of current interest to students and where the board stands on those and where we do, what the leadership role is. So contact Peggy if you're interested in speaking with any of those schools. I think Kathy's going to be at WSU.
Yeah.
Good deal. And remember, too, that we have a PowerPoint that we have created, Peggy, what we, that Peggy and staff have collaboratively created. That is available. We presented it to you several months ago for that presentation or for other presentations that you might be making as a template to structure your presentation around. But we also have developed a resource tab that is going to be located on our site. And Peggy's going to talk to us a little bit about this resource tab, how to access it and what's there. The why of what we're doing this is these are resources, like the PowerPoint that I just spoke about, that you can access, download, and then use. We get these things mailed to us if you're like me or te-mailed, and then I got to remember, where did I put that? Well, here's a lot of resources that'll be available to you, and Peggy will tell you some of those resources and how to access them on our tab.
When we thought about how to organize a central location to access some of these things, like a fact sheet on the new teacher licensure changes and the fact sheet on the data privacy Student Act, it just made sense to have one central location so when you're at home and want to print a fact sheet or pull up that information, it's readily available. So IT helped me put a resource tab on. It's actually where you access the hand-waving, so it's not necessarily open to the public, though some of those same fact sheets are on the KSD website, they're just in multiple locations. So when you log in from home, and I can email to you guys the general instructions, there's a blue tab at the top that says "Resources," and under there is a single page of several links on Common Core, including information from National PTA and CCSO and some of those places, the PowerPoint on the Senate Bill 367 on the Data Student Privacy Act. So anyway, hopefully, that's a helpful thing for you guys to be able to go to one spot and pull up that information when you need it. I guess that's all I know on that.
If there are resources that you would like to see on this tab, please let Peggy know, and she'll alert us to what's there. Hopefully, this will be a help. We went to other sites and found that around the country, you know, school boards, state boards had resource tabs like this, you know, to just help us do our job better, you know, and more efficiently. There's a thought.
Jim, I had a question.
Sure.
You said institutions had requested speakers. Were we, how do we know that? Where, was there an email sent out that I missed?
Originally, when we, last spring, opened up the availability, there were, well, those particular four schools said spring was not going to be a good time, that put us on the list for fall. So now that it's fall, I thought it'd be a good time to bring it back up. In addition, I think there's three or four teacher ed programs that have new leadership in place, and so I wanted you guys in your packet to know who those new folks were.
Okay, so that list is in the packet. And it says which ones have requested.
Right. And typically, I will try to get that information out to you. This just seemed like a good time to try to offer that since it was the start of a new school year.
Okay. Well, and the paper shuffle, I missed it. I'm sorry, Jim.
Boy, that can happen. That's why we're putting the resource tab.
Good.
That's exactly why, with the paper shuffle and I'm always looking for, I got that sent to me and I put it in a file, now where did I put it? So it's, it'll be very helpful, I believe. Just on a side, Peggy was kind enough to send us information about new superintendents in our area, and boy, that was a big help. Thank you very much. When you consider the changes that are happening, but I've been able to contact them, and hopefully you'll have the same opportunity. But there were four new ones in my area. Some areas had more, some areas less. But when you consider we had 39 new superintendents and 23 are first time, a couple of them in my area I hadn't met yet, you know, so that was, it was a good resource. Thank you, Peggy, for doing that. The postcards we had, I'm, probably because I'm the point person on it, I hear some positive things about it. And we've already started a list, and we'll be checking it twice and then presenting it to you in September about the themes for the postcards. And again, we'll be mostly focusing on celebratory and recognition, the well-deserved, recognition, I might add, in terms of the folks that come before us and what schools have done, but also information about, you know, our goals and objectives and keeping that in front of legislators during the session. And we certainly are eager to get your input. You can give us some information before the September meeting, and we're anticipating giving you a preliminary list of themes for these postcards and the September meeting. So it's fast approaching. Unbelievable. You know, last year, we hosted a House and Senate Leadership, no, House and Senate Education Committees meeting with, and I believe it was in November, was it not? You know.
I think it was after October.
October? Okay. I guess, you know, my feeling is that that was a very positive meeting. I received very positive feedback from the legislators who attended, and actually, one lamented the fact that they weren't there. So I think that's something we should do, but I would ask you now, you know, what are your thoughts? Is that something that we want to proceed with? Steve?
Well, I think my issue is a little more tangential, so I'll let someone else speak at this juncture.
Okay. Yeah, I had just noticed Steve's, you want to comment, you save your comment until after we address this issue.
Yes.
Okay. Kathy Bush.
I felt like that that House and Senate Ed meeting was productive and helpful. It might help to think about the timing of it, particularly with the commissioner's search, and maybe we want to do it after the new commissioner's onboard. I know that gets closer to the legislative session because it'll probably be, I would assume, November. I'm C. Howard here, so I'm guessing we're going to get an update today. But I think maybe in thinking about the commissioner's search, that might be good to have the new person, whoever that is, onboard.
Peggy, how much lead time do we need for an event like that, though? I mean, in, you know, doing all the preliminary work we need to do, I.
Well, I would say invitations need to go out three to four weeks ahead of time. I don't know, I mean, the capital, if we schedule it over there, wouldn't be as critical in the fall as it would, obviously, during the session.
So you might look at the calendar and bring a recommendation, a recommended date for in September with that in mind. Are there other responses to Jim's question? Deana?
Well, and my comment is maybe a little bit as a, in response to Kathy's comment. I would imagine if we are only selecting the individual in November, they are not going to be actually here necessarily until maybe the earliest December, January. So I'm not sure whether that's going to be, that's going to be pushing us right up really close to the session. And so I'm not sure we need to be concerned about whether we have that individual, our new commissioner, onboard at that point. It'd be nice, but the timing, I doubt it will occur. And so, but I do agree that it was a very helpful, productive opportunity to have dialogue. So I think more of that needs to occur, frankly.
And I don't know if Kathy had in mind having that person present or just knowing that the decision had been made at that point. And Jim had a comment about that, but Kathy, what was your thinking?
Well, you know, and I think it's probably fine to have the committee, I mean, we can hear what Howard has to say today and then have the committee come back with a recommendation date in September. I don't think that's too far out, but I think it's a good idea. You know, if the person can be here, fine. I mean, they certainly are going to interact with those committees. So I think it'd be best, but it may not be able to happen with, you know, because when the legislative session starts, it's pretty busy. So it may not be able to happen this year, but, you know, it'd be nice if it could.
Remembering past history, it seems like at one time, we tried to have a meeting, a reception or something with some of those groups after the session had started. Isn't that right? Does anyone remember? And it wasn't too well-attended because they were so busy with other obligations. Kathy?
And the other thing to think about is the elections in November, and some of these folks may or may not be back. And the committees may change a little bit. I don't know when all that takes place, but, you know, there's some things to consider as far as the folks that are involved. So maybe the committee, our committee, Communication Committee, needs to just kind of give it some thought.
Mold that over.
Come back with some recommendations.
Yeah, there are a lot of factors at play, more so than usual. Let's see. Sally Cobble.
Madam Chairman, I was just going to make the same comment that Kathy just said, that come in November, we could have some turnover and those committees would be different. But at the same time, if we're going to do it, I'd like to back it up on, I'd like to do it in November if we're going to back it up to one of our meetings. But I'll talk to Jim and we'll see and bring back a suggestion.
That's good.
At the next board meeting.
Comments like this are really important. You know, it is a transitional year. It would, there are other factors, like the commissioner selection process, that'll be part of it. Listening to what you all have had to say and then, and any comments that you want to send forward would be good. We'll also, I'll also be talking to the legislators and see what they think, you know, works for them.
Good.
So, now, I get a sense, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, that we'd like to proceed with this, and hopefully, we can work it out. But there are extenuating circumstances that may restrict or in some way change the dynamics because, that are out of our control.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. And Carolyn, you, did you have a comment about this issue?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Couple of things I thought that we should consider in when we make this invitation is, and I'm sure you will, the transition, but the new, all the new members of the legislature, whether they're on the education committees or not. And then I even thought, why, I think big, just invite all the senators and representatives to come. Now, then you think of a room, well, there's the House, House of Representatives that they could, we could fit them in there. And there is an organizational meeting, and so you might look, find that date and see so they wouldn't be having to come back a different time.
That's December, July. Good. It's always good to have a different perspective.
That's a big one. That's a big one.
Yeah.
Okay. Good things to think about and good things to consider, and thank you very much.
And Steve Roberts had a comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Sort of in the ways we communicate and get messages to one another, I sent out an email, I don't know if you got it, had a seven-minute video from PBS. I don't know if you all had a chance to see that. But I initially sent it to Peggy, I said, "Please forward." And Peggy asked if that would be appropriate, and she was directed not to forward it on. And so if people are truly looking out for me and keep us out of hot water with coma issues and Open Meetings Act, then I have nothing but gratitude for that. I thank you for that. If, on the other hand, it's simply because I've come out against. If, on the other hand, it's simply because I've come out against Common Core and I'm the fly in the ointment and you don't want to hear from me because I'm not going along with the crowd, then I got issue with that. So as, as we communicate, the reason I wanted to share it is it was very timely, it was right after our last meeting. And it seems to me that the reactionary faulty role against Common Core is waning, thankfully. This misinformation that we all talk about, oh, it's a federal takeover and it's, you know, all this hyperbole. This was a very thoughtful presentation on PBS, which is hardly a bastion of, you know, right-wing reactionary stuff. It was very well done, and it was about sampling our schools in a more efficient fashion and testing better and taking a step back from Common Core, and it was really well If, I want to be clear about this, I want to absolutely respect the protocols that we have in the institution and the body to make it work. And if people are looking out for this body and saying, "We can't forward this on, Mr. Roberts, because we might be getting in trouble with the real protocols that we have for very good reasons," I want to respect that wholeheartedly. But I also want to make the point that if it's simply because, oh, we're all, you know, we wanted to proffer Common Core and Roberts isn't, you know, part of the team, he's not a team player, so we're not going to proffer his ideas. If that's what's driving this, then I'm going to have to stand up and actually be louder and more obnoxious, and I don't want to do that. I want to respect this body and respect this board. I just want to make that point. So when there's something that, that I feel is really warranted to share, and I know we've had board members in the past that have shared way too much and say, "Look here, look here, look here, you know, my way is the only way." I don't want to do that either. But I do want open communication when something sort of bucks the trend, but it's worth looking at, I want to have that opportunity. I've had just now, thank you.
Steve, since I was not aware of this situation, Mark and Brad have a comment about it.
I just wanted to comment that I got, I was copied on an email dated July 11th that did go to everyone. It's, and it started out, "No reply, please." I wasn't involved in any discussion about, about that prior, but it looks like the entire board was copied. And, and as you appropriately prefaced your email, "Don't reply," because as we've talked about before, it's the, it's the inner email dialogue that then can violate the open, open meetings. I think everyone got that email.
And I might comment, we've, and this is some direction we could get from the board. We've always had a practice that if board members want to communicate, they have a way to do that, but running it through the agency and then back out, we've always had a practice that we, because we try to, because typically if Peggy sends something out, it's for informational, coming from the commissioner or something. So it's just been our practice that if, if board members want to communicate something, they do that because they have a practice. But we've always refrained from running it through the agency and back out because then it has a different interpretation, that it might be something that Peggy has. So it, and it is, just to try to refrain from a board member replying back to Peggy thinking something is opposed to, and that was the only reason, is we try to take the, the board secretary out of the loop, because typically when something comes from the board secretary, it's from, for business purposes. So we just had that practice that if you have something to share with the board, it's better if you share it than running it through Peggy, because Peggy is typically business-related. So that was the only reason.
And, and where I'm coming from is, I've worked so many different places that consistency of the message to me is essential. So, you know, if I started doing a piecemeal and I send more to Jim than I do to Kathy or I send more to Carolyn than I do to Janet, I mean, I really like it to be consistent, and that's why I like the central distribution center. And that's, that's all I'm trying to do is be consistent in the message. So if I say something to one board member, I say it to all. And if there's a better way to do it, I'm all in favor.
And that's where we could have some guidance, because consistently, we try to keep the board secretary out of, because Peggy's main purpose is to share business-related. And so if, if you or Ken or anybody has something to share with the board, past practice has been, you just share with the board. And we, so, but if, if there's other direction on that, so, and we've had others where it's like, because it's a different perception when it comes from Peggy than if it came from you. So we've always just kept communication between board members with board members and Peggy with business.
Well, if, one, one last point is I think one of the strengths of this board is the willingness to communicate. I think that's one of our strongest aspects and the work that Jim and Sally have done in communication to make communication lines open and more conducive to exchange of ideas has been, I mean, this is a pretty good board in that respect. And so I want to make it clear that I want to respect the institutions and the protocols that we have. I'm just looking for ways to buck the system without bucking it in a, you know, there are changes to make, and how do you, how do you change a system that is inherently resistant to change?
Well, Steve, the particular issue we're talking about right now, though, it appears as if the email you sent was forwarded to all board members. So it doesn't seem to me that that's a legitimate complaint at this time, because all board members did receive it.
Very good.
So I don't know what interactions happened in regard to that that made you feel that it was being kept from other board members. So it doesn't matter at this point, but I'm glad to know that it was forwarded and so board members did have an opportunity to view it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for clarification purposes, if we have something that we want to send among ourselves, and this is kind of for Mark, we can create our own email group that we can send things among the 10 members, but since it's going to the 10 members, it still is subject to the open records information as far as it going to more than a majority of the board. So it wouldn't come from Peggy, it would be communications among the group, but it's still subject to open records, isn't it not?
It is subject to open records because it's going by and between the board. The issue with the open meetings is that when it becomes, when you respond to one or more, and then it can be serial communications, then the tendency is to respond and therefore it becomes an interactive communication by email. So, so that's why we've typically cautioned to, you know, keep it to a minimum, but also qualify it by saying, you know, "Don't reply, this is for informational purposes only, it's not intended to start a dialogue or email debate." And I think that the point, just to build on Brad's point, is that the secretary to the board represents the entire board, not an individual board member. So if she were then forwarding on, you know, emails at the request of an individual board member, it looks like she's taking, she's acting in her official capacity. So this came directly from a board member to other board members, and just for the record, because it's been commented on publicly here, I mean, it says, "No reply, please," and there's appropriate cautionary language to adhere to coma at all times and not to engage in the, in the, in a back-and-forth dialogue. And so it appears to be appropriate and legal.
So for future purposes, then we can send something among ourselves with the no reply disclaimer or statement at the top as far as sharing information? Is that, would that, should that be the way we should do something like this?
There's no prohibition against you sending emails to one or more of your fellow board members. There's no, there's no prohibition about that. The only, we always say that the caveat to that is that it tends to, if it's something that somebody disagrees with or begins to discuss business of the board, there's the tendency to want to, you know, either say "me too" or, or object to it, and then that's when you can get into the trouble of having the interactive communication by email that can get into violation, so.
But isn't there a distinction between just sharing information and the topic being business of the board? I mean, we can't communicate via internet regarding any issues or business of the board, can we?
Well, it's...
I mean, if it were an agenda item or something, I've always, that's always been my understanding, that we had to be very careful.
Well, it has to do with, I mean, if it's business of the board, but it also, keep in mind, if it's a static communication, if it's just a one-way communication, it's not, it's not a conversation. And, and so it could still be, I mean, it's not advisable because there, like I say, it creates the tendency, nobody, you know, you're all elected officials, if there's somebody that takes a strong position or a position on something that's coming forward, there's a tendency to want to express your point or counterpoint or support that. And the Open Meetings Act is intended to have a public dialogue on issues of the board. But if it is a one-way communication that's not responded to, it doesn't technically violate the Open Meetings Act because it's not a conversation, it's not a, it's not a debate that's occurring outside the public domain.
Brad?
Just to follow up, though, on, on Steve's thing, it's always been the practice of the board secretary to only send things out that are in response to meetings and stuff, but not be a relay of, and that was the only purpose of that is that, that way the board knows if they get anything from Peggy, it's in response to a follow-up to a meeting, something coming up to the next meeting, and it's directly related to the business of the board. So that's why it's, has nothing to do with the topic or issue. Now, if the board wants to use Peggy as a way to funnel things outside of specifically what, then we'd need direction on that. But that's just because there are ways for the board to be able to communicate with each other.
Brad, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Dina?
Ken, can this?
Oh, Ken, I'm sorry. I didn't see your name and I missed your hand.
Well, it's, my understanding has always been that the danger or the infraction consists of replying to all. But if I get a mass email from Steve to the, to the board and I want to respond to him directly, I don't, that does not seem to be, am I wrong? Is that the problem with that? It has to be, we can't be...
You, you are technically correct that you can respond directly to Steve. The problem is if Steve sends an email to nine other members and you respond and a majority of the board also individually respond, there can be a technical violation because you've got, you've got a majority of the board. So you, given your scenario, you are absolutely correct. You just individually responding to Steve is not a violation. But if five other board members chose to individually respond, now Steve is advocating for a position, having a conversation with one-on-one with other board members, and it's a conversation that's occurring by email, not in the public view. Similarly, if he chooses to send an email to only three members of the board, for example, and then those three members decide to forward it on to three other members, now you've got a majority of the board conducting a conversation. So it is so fact-specific, but that's why we always just say, "Look, if you're going to respond, you run the risk because you don't know what other board members, if they choose to send it on to one or two other board members, and somebody raises a concern and you all have to disclose your emails, it could be in hindsight that you're, that a majority of the board is engaging in an ongoing conversation that is not in the public view."
Yeah, thank you. Well, I don't know that I've ever, if I've done it, it's been very rare, but I didn't realize that it went that, that deep.
It can, but you know, I mean, you have to apply some practicality. If you just said, "Thank you," I mean, that's not going to be, you know, if you just said, "Thank you for the information," that's not expressing a position or, you know, but if, but if you said, "I agree" or "I disagree," now you're engaged in a, in a, in a debate that should be in public.
Okay.
Well, thank you. It's a very tricky road to travel, I think. Dina?
I just want to clarify. If one of us has a position on a rule or regulation that's going to be discussed, that's on the agenda, sends it out, sends that opinion and the backup information that may need to, that may support that board member's position to all the board members. And as long as you place on, place on that communication that don't respond, it's okay to do that.
The legal answer is that that is a, that is not a technical violation. It's not a good practice because it tends, it's, it's a one-sided conversation that's not occurring in the public. And we've had problems in the past where somebody advocates for a position and the tone of the email or the content of the email tends to elicit the natural reaction to want to respond and, and, you know, you all have, have views on subjects and you don't want to just have somebody impose your, their view. So I'm just saying, is, you are absolutely correct that just sending that information out with that, with that statement not to respond is technical, technically not a violation. But it can, it can lead to one, and that's why we say that it's just not advisable.
It's not...
It's not good practice.
It's not as good a practice and we should be probably practicing good practice.
There are three requirements to violation of the Open Meetings Act. You have to have a majority, it has to be interactive, and it has to be business of the board. And so those are the three elements.
Are there comments on this issue before we continue with our agenda? I think this is a discussion that maybe added more confusion to my...
It helped out. It certainly is communication, certainly as a, one where, obviously by our conversation, there needed to be some clarity. So it was a good, it was a good exercise. I learned a lot, you know, from what you all had to say. So Steve, thank you for that clarification and that issue. You know, it helps out a lot, especially as we get into more communication, to know the parameters, you know, that we live under. The last thing, and truly, I hope this, this is the last thing, and I'm going to be Steve for a moment.
Oh, my.
Yes. And in my experience, and I brought this up before, items such as lapel pins, not the royal, Steve, but, you know, every school I've been at, you know, the thing, lapel pins have always been an important part, a subtle way of getting a message out of who you are and what you stand for and where you are. And I find them to be amazingly, how people notice them, as small as they are and insignificant as they are, how people notice, you know, these things. And in communication, that's a big part of communication. It's not always about the big noisy things you do, but the subtle things you do to communicate who you are and where you are. And that has to do with, you know, shirts, for instance. You know, when I'm at... You know, when I'm at, I was at a recent meeting, and it would have been nice if I could have had, you know, I would have, I would have been proud to wear a polo shirt or a shirt that said, "State Board of Education Member," like our badge. A badge, sometimes, I like the badge, but sometimes, you know, a little bit more, you know? So, we're going to come back with some recommendations on this during the next fall. And if you have any thoughts or ideas, you know, certainly, we will not be throwing balls with state board members on. But this is a really good thing for what CTE is trying to do, you know? And this is, this is where you want to be with them. So, for us, where we want to be is more, I think, the lapel pin or the shirt or blouse or whatever that we would be wearing that might do that. And that would be totally up to you to do. We're not going to provide, we're not going to pay for your shirt, your pin or your shirt. Don't look at me that way.
That would be available.
But it would be available, you know? And they're easy to have done. So I might have some done and just bring some up and show you what I'm talking about. You know, it's a much subtler form of communication, but I think a very effective form of communication when used appropriately. So, that's basically our, our report for this month. Thank you for the conversation, and thank you for your support. Ideas, recommendations, give them to Peggy. And Peggy and Sally and I will get together and talk to you about, you know, next month, our direction. And thank you again on the meeting with the Senate and the House Education Committees and others. You've given us some good things to think about. That's, there are other ways. We need to be very thoughtful about this, especially in this time of transition. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and Sally, and Peggy. I feel like you've done just an excellent job in helping us communicate in some new and very effective ways, and we appreciate your leadership on this. Next, we have Scott Myers to give us a recommendation to the Professional Standards Board.
Good morning. And you have information in your packet regarding what I'm here to discuss today. I'm here to recommend a new appointment to the Professional Standards Board, the person of Tammy Bartles, representing the Kansas PTA. She'd be serving her first of a three-year term, replacing Laura Kaiser, who completed her two terms as she could serve. And that's why I'm here, make that recommendation.
And Laura Kaiser also represented PTA.
She absolutely-
So, that's a very good recommendation. Is there, oh, Janet Waugh.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Janet Waugh, seconded by Deana Horst. Is there discussion? I think we all know Tammy, and I think she's-
She's here.
Oh, where is she?
She's in your bag.
Well, hi, Tammy, I didn't see you. Well, she has been a presence here, and we know her, and personally, I think she'd be an excellent addition to that board. Are there other comments? Then we will vote. All in favor of that appointment of Tammy Bartles? Raise your right hand. Okay, we have a 10-0 vote. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Tammy, for being willing to serve. And Carolyn Campbell had a comment that I missed here.
No, I put it, I want sort of to ask Scott to-
Oh, Scott, sorry.
I have a question. Fred Patton, who's a member, if, and I don't know, he make, he was just elected as a House of Representatives, and I don't know if he will stay on the, his local seaman board, but have, he probably, he's probably so excited, he just was certified Monday. So I don't, you know, know, but I guess you'll be determining whether he's going to stay.
Certainly.
Okay, because I already, if possible, I already have someone in mind if Fred decides that he can't do both.
Okay, we'll be in dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we do need to appoint a delegate to the Annual Conference of NASB. It will be October 16 through the 18th in Denver, Colorado. As you know, our very own board member, Jim McNeese, is a candidate for election to President-elect of this group. And to my knowledge, at this time, Jim and Ken are planning to attend. I wondered if there are any other board members who are planning to attend that meeting, so we'll know who might be a possibility. Deana, are you going to be there?
I'm planning.
Okay. Anyone else? John?
Yep.
Who would be interested in serving as delegate, then? Because I know some of you have other responsibilities.
Raise your hand.
How about John?
Huh? John? John, would you be willing to do that?
Yes.
Well, good. Then I believe we do need to vote to appoint John Bacon as the delegate, and probably we might want to have an alternate in case there's something that comes up. Deana, would you be willing to be the alternate, then? Or are you definitely planning to attend?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I hear a motion, then?
Yes.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, moved by Janet Waugh, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have another unanimous vote on that. Thank you very much. Then we need to make appointments to the Migrant Council, Interstate Migrant Education Council. The recommendation for this are Sally Cobble, who has served in this capacity in the past, and Representative John Dahl. Is there a motion? Moved by Jim McNeese. Is there a second? Seconded by Deana Horst. Is there discussion or any questions? I believe Sally does have a lot of counties that are affected by this work of this group. So, Sally, do you have any comments?
No, I enjoy it.
Okay. Steve?
I would like to just know a little bit more about it from someone who has familiarity. I'm at their website, Interstate Migrant and Education Council.
Yes.
It says, "They focus on the legislation, regulations, and non-regulatory guidance governing the program," which has been around since 1983, "advocating for policies that make positive impact upon the education of migrant, migrant children in our nation." So while I'm sure it's laudable, I just don't know how it works. So I'd like to know more about it. I mean, the goals are laudable, I'm sure, but I'd like to know more about it if somebody could kind of give me a brief overview.
Sally, would you like to comment on that?
Jim, it, it's like most committee, Jim, Steve.
He was right, he's a man.
Oops, Steve. It, it's like a lot of committees that you serve on, that when the Senate and the House are working on the regulations for migrant education, you, you're at the table so you know whether it will work within your state or whether it won't, and give suggestions on, this won't work, but if you did it this way, it might. It isn't any different than serving on the Governmental Affairs Committee of NASB on reauthorization of ESEA, what will work and what won't in your state. And so, it keeps, it keeps us, I like it because when I go, it keeps me upfront about what's coming in migrant education that we might need to know about. And also, it gives us a voice at the table on, wait a minute, that won't work.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Best explanation I can give.
And because you represent the western half of the state, most of, a majority of our migrant, migrant children are in your area. Okay, other questions? Jim McNeese?
I'd like to comment on Representative Dahl being appointed to this. He is a longtime resident of western Kansas. He's a former educator, businessman in the community, former council member and mayor of Garden City. He's an excellent choice for this position, and I look forward to him and Sally working together, representing Kansas and representing us, you know, at, at the national level. I think it's a great, great choice.
Thank you. Other comments before we vote? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have a unanimous vote on this issue. We will take a break until 10:15 before we get into our board reports and have Mr. Schuler talk to us. Thank you. Okay, we're going to resume our meeting with a report from our friend Howard Schuler, who's going to give us an update on the commissioner search process. Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. We received an information because you duplicated much of the official-
Can keep it all. And it has to do with the focus groups that we held with all the State Department employees. I was told by the, I asked by them to share with you how much they appreciated the ability to meet us face-to-face and talk to us, and had really good turnouts. If you look on the book, you'll notice there'll be an asterisk by a certain topic. That means that is a common theme. It's the most often mentioned idea by that group. And to the upper right of the name of the group is the number of people who attended. For example, early childhood had 11 people there. We went over three days, and we had the last meeting, the third day, which for anybody who'd missed the first two days, and we had people come in for that. And then we had a lot of State Department officials fill out the survey that we had, Survey Monkey, and they did a good job on that. The first three through 14 pages are all about those meetings. I'm not going to read them to you, I'll just bring out some of the highlights that I anticipated that would come out, and they did. One, the morale in the department is much higher than I anticipated. It was very good. They're looking forward for a new commissioner. They want a new commissioner that has some great ideas, but they want someone who knows that there's a lot of good things going on now. Don't come in and destroy the apple cart because they want to make a change. Really look and see what's good going on in Kansas. Lot of concern from members about the lack of pay. That comes up every time we meet. Understandable. I think the most notable was probably the IT department. It's not the amount of pay they get, it's the amount of pay that attracts people into that area, because that's a high-demand area all through society. I believe that's probably true, so they're pretty vocal about that. Integrity is probably mentioned most often about what they're looking for in a new commissioner. They think we have a very caring agency that really looks, focuses on students and the teachers in the field, that they think we really have a caring agency. It's certainly become a more service-oriented group, and it has in the past, rather regulatory, it's more service-oriented, and I think that's very good. Are the challenges they're going to face a new person? Without a doubt, every time the legislature was mentioned, that's the number-one issue that they're going to have to face, regardless of what party's there, it's just an issue force all the time. You want someone who's going to be a good manager, going to have communication skills, going to be able to talk to the legislature, going to be able to talk with the people in the field, not just administrators, but all the teachers, especially the parents. They don't take, our commissioners have done enough with parents, that's going to be PTA groups and things like that. They think that's very beneficial. Talk about individuals, needs to be passionate, and we all believe that, that's one of your characteristics that you put down. Just a strong, strong feeling that this individual should be from Kansas or know a lot about Kansas, has this education. I don't know if it comes from the fact that a couple of times they've had people from out of state that didn't fare real well as commissioners here, I don't know why I brought that on, but they come up quite frequently. They would like to have somebody with long tenure and every superintendent searched and every, everybody wants, somebody's going to be here forever. You just can't legislate that, or you can't promise that. You just have to hope we get the best person that can stay. When we move on to the Survey Monkey, I want to say that these have not been altered. It's how they said it, that's how it goes right into the report. It's only human nature, and my, this is coming from Howard Schuler, it's not coming from Pearson-Jackson, but when personally it's not face-to-face with someone, if they're speaking about something that they dislike or they're negative, they're more vocal than if they're looking right in the eye. So they'll write a lot more than they would say in person. So there's some things in there about the board, there's some things in there about the leadership that you just take with the tongue in cheek. I will say that the people here in the State Department really, really have strong support of their leadership here. It's amazing how much they depend on the leadership to lead them as they struggle through hard times here at the State Department of Ed. You need to read that very carefully, there's a lot of information there for you, it's been well-documented. I'll be glad to share any firsthand information that I may have picked up. Also sent to you a copy of the application. This is a new application. You're sure you've not been introduced to it? I was out last year and didn't get to work for the company. Chris and Von both have used the Apple Track, but we can track from the time somebody opens the application until it's finalized, and see where they're doing. Right now, at four o'clock yesterday, we have 10 applications, which is much higher than I thought it would be. Three are 100% complete, the others are in the process. So we're going to get at least 10 applications. Now, as you know, we're a long ways from the deadline, so we have always said we get 80% the last three or four days, and that still may happen. But our projection of 15, I think, is probably low. I think we're going to get more than that. So that's, that's a good note. For Howard advertising, I want you to know that we sent out letters to 100 consultants that work for us and told them about the opening, and they'll broadcast it in their We have 500 people who register with our company, they lack an administrative position. They each got a letter, and they all know about the opening. It's been posted on our Facebook page. It's been on our Twitter account, and our homepage gets about 80,000 hits a month. So it's a very popular page, especially this time of year, everybody starts rolling before superintendents start resigning and etc. We also, we're on K-12 Job Spot. AASA started, will start September 1 for 30 days, and that's a very high-profile advertisement, most expensive one we use. National Association of School Boards, 30 days starting September 1. We have posted in all states that have school board associations and administrator associations just posted on their websites. So we're just now getting ready to really get hit with the information that's out there. So I think we'll really spur up in the next two months, so.
Did you mention Education Week?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm having a little trouble hearing some of your comments, I'm sorry. Good.
Yep. Questions you might have, if I had to answer?
Jim McNeese-
Jim.
-had a comment, I think.
What was your last?
Hmm?
No.
You didn't?
They just did that.
Well, I did, and then maybe some others. I was really happy with the number of respondents here in- here in the agency. I tried to add them up really fast. It looked like you, almost 90 people had participated either online or in person. And we felt it was very important to have input from people here at the agency. And I think that's a tremendous turnout, so.
Having worked here, I know what it is, how many people are out each day during their jobs out in the field, or going to various meetings. We had a good turnout. I thought it was excellent. I was very pleased. And then a lot of them couldn't make the meeting, respond to their survey.
Uh huh. The application you gave us today, is this the final copy, or is it?
Yes, it's the final copy.
Okay. So we'll have an opportunity to look that over?
I sat and looked at the 10 people who were applying last time, and looked at their application, where they were under process.
Yeah, okay.
When it's complete, and if it's assigned to Howard Schuler, they'll come to me immediately. Under our old system, they had to go to the home office and gather up five and send them to Howard, and five to Chris, and five to Von, you know. But we couldn't start bidding until we had it in our hands. Now we start bidding the minute they finish that application. Von Lauer got to work with it all year last year, and he said it's fantastic, too. I spent an hour and a half with one of the secretaries yesterday, just walking through it. And it has a lot of information. It's, for people who are computer literate, it's pretty easy to operate. For me, it was difficult, but it's pretty easy to operate.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How are you going to kind of review the timeline with us again?
October 15th is the deadline. However, I got the rest. I'm here in front of me or not.
And I think we all received a copy. You might want to find it as he reviews it with us.
Go ahead.
Or do you, you have a copy?
I don't think I have a copy here.
Oh.
Board dates. It wasn't all relevant to the search.
Oh, okay.
But October 29th will be the presentation of applicant candidates to the board. So that'll be a special board meeting that morning. That gives them, what, two weeks after closing date to do your reference checks. And then November 5th, 6th, and 7th will be interview dates. And do they need to plan a full day per candidate? How do we need to organize that?
I think they can make that decision themselves. Would typically take a full day. I'm not sure it'd be necessary in this instance.
Okay, might be something to decide as we plan that part.
Yeah, we can discuss that next month.
We typically are trying to show the candidate, the entire community that they're applying for. Well, we won't do that in this case. Things need to peek on the map, and that's fair enough, so.
I see that Steve Roberts has a question.
Yes, Howard, and thank you, Madam Chair. On page 23, in reading the next to the last bullet point on page 23, I'm guessing that eggs is regs. But I was just wondering if there's a metaphor that I'm not familiar with. The second to the last bullet point says, "Look beyond Kansas rules, eggs and culture." Now, right before that, there's a reference to rules, regs, and culture. And I was just wondering if someone was just getting cute with the language, or if there's something I just, you know, I've led a sheltered life, and I just ain't been around enough. Just curious.
I think that must have been a typo.
I think it's a typo. Well, it is.
Sally Cobble.
What's the young dipop senior right now that's in trouble at 28?
Madam Chairman, I have a point of clarification. This document that we received, is it for the public, or is it private?
I think it can be for anybody. I want you to look at it.
There's just some, some things that, in here, that I think are interesting, that I'd like to share with maybe some legislators. And I just didn't know if that, that is acceptable, or whether this is a private document.
We've always encouraged sharing with the finalists. They should be able to look at this, see what are the trouble spots I'm going to be looking towards, what are the things that's successful here. I think it's good. They didn't do that, though.
Okay, thank you.
If they look at it, I think any legislature could look at it, anyone.
Thank you.
We have no problem with it.
Other questions or comments? Well, we'll look these things over. And thank you so much for being here and for the time spent with the staff. I think that was a very important part of our process.
I really appreciate it.
And I'm pleased to hear how many applications are being developed right now. That's good.
I'm sure there'll be a couple or three that, you know, want to get a second look, but most are good applications, so.
Good. Thank you for being here today.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
I will continue with my report. I wanted to mention that we lost a wonderful advocate for education recently, Karen Godfrey. She was articulate. She was strong. And I wanted to thank the members of the board who were able to attend her services. We did send an arrangement to the service, and I wanted to thank Peggy for making those arrangements for us in recognition of her life, her advocacy, and our admiration for her. So, thank you who attended. Janet, did you want to make a comment about that?
For those of you who did not attend, I did attend, and Steve attended. But I just simply wanted to comment that Penny pointed out the flowers that we sent. Did you see those, Steve? They were just beautiful. I mean, honestly, these were one of the, one of the prettiest I've ever seen. They were huge sunflowers, like three of them. And they were just beautiful and so appropriate, I thought. And it was a lovely service. It really was.
Well, thanks to you.
But if you haven't paid Janet, I would encourage though.
Thanks to you and Steve for attending for us. I did want to mention, I don't know if you noticed, that our slogan, I guess you would call it, Peggy had arranged to have that framed and had, had a nice display of it for us. And thank you. Yeah, it looks good.
I want to say to the board, thank you for this lady down here. She is absolutely marvelous what she does for us. To me, our job, very easy. My job especially. But thank you.
We just sometimes take those wonderful things you do for us for granted, Peggy, and we do appreciate them. I did want to mention that we have received some correspondence that you might want to be aware of. We received a thank you note from Jan Alderson, the 2014 National Teacher Hall of Fame inductee, who was with us last time. A thank you letter from St. Mark's AME Church for our donation in memory of James Campbell. And a letter from Robert Wunsch about the importance of handwriting in school. Ken had responded to him, and Peggy did send information that satisfied his request. So thank you for taking care of that correspondence. Yesterday, we, and I haven't had a chance to ask Mark about this, so I don't know if, if he's had time. Yesterday, we talked about reviewing those bylaws for the innovative schools group.
I haven't had a chance to do it, but I planned to do it today while I'm on my, on the clock, while I'm here, before I leave. And I'll make those, make those, share my comments, both with Scott and with Dina. I printed out copies of the, of the bylaws, and we plan to review those.
So, so by our next meeting, they'll have?
They will have them before the end of the day today.
Okay.
My comments on.
All right. Well, thank you. I believe that's all the business I had to report. So we will move on to the board attorney's report.
Beyond my monthly summary of activities, I don't have anything to report of significance this month. It's pretty detailed. I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Committee reports. We've already heard from our communications committee. I just noticed that I was, I had an announcement here that your packet did include an invitation to KSDE's annual conference coming up in October. And of course, the regional ban quits for the Kansas Teacher of the Year, you've received invitations to those. So if you haven't included those events in your travel, you may want to do so. We're to a point of looking at board member reports. We'll, I think I started down there last time. We'll start with Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was remiss last month when I, when I told you that Ralph Beecham was leaving the Professional Standards Board. I failed to mention that the incoming chair will be Dr. Mercer, Deb Mercer of K-State. She'll be chairing the Professional Standards Board. So, and I had a chance to meet with her, actually. We spent an hour together chatting in Manhattan. I visited her to, to learn more about what these essential elements are for pedagogy. And I'm, I'm still on a quest to find that out. I didn't get a lot of answers. Basically, I got a, you know, we agree to disagree, that it's a good idea to welcome professionals into certain technical courses in secondary school. I believe that, and you know I believe that. And Deb Mercer would disagree with that, and we agreed to disagree. A week later, I met with Rick Ginsburg to discuss the same issues at KU. And again, I'm still looking for that, those, those elements that are, those essential pedagogical elements that, that teachers have to have. I think we would do well to make a greater division between primary and secondary, and let our colleges of education focus on primary as well as special education. Aside from that, I don't know when the next meeting of the Professional Standards Board will be. But the other meeting that I had was with Dr. Perry about, we talked a lot about math and standardized testing and so forth. And I copied her on the, that same video that generated a lot of our discussion here today, that seven-minute video from PBS. I have not had any further conversations about that with Dr. Perry. But I really like the fact that Dr. Perry is committed to doing what's, what's good for Kansans families. I mean, bottom line, it's not just a matter of fulfilling a contract, it seems to me. It's, there's something deeper than that. So I was very privileged to spend an hour with Dr. Mercer, Dr. Ginsburg, and Dr. Perry since we last met. Thank you.
Ken Wellard.
Last week, I had the privilege of going to the C-3, or Central Comprehensive Center, annual advisory board meeting. That was actually supposed to have been attended by Brad and a delegation from the department, but they were unable to make it because of a leaky airplane. I didn't have that kind of bad luck, but on the way back, I did get to spend an extra night in Houston because I couldn't get through there. But it was, I think this may be the third or fourth of these that I've been to. It was extremely good. We had presentations. When I saw the agenda, I thought, I'm not sure this is going to be too, I didn't see how it was going to fit. Because we had presentations on innovation and technology and architecture for education. I had a group of architects there that are out of, I think out of the Overland Park area, who are doing some really unique and interesting things that support the whole idea of innovation and flexibility of learning environments and learning styles of kids. They're doing it with architecture. So it was very well done. And they're, they're doing some projects in Kansas and other places around the country where they're actually getting maximum utility out of space, rather than just the standard school with classrooms that we normally look at. And they, so their, their presentation was excellent. The, the highlight of it, in my view, was a presentation by, well, let me preface this by saying, as normal, if, if, if my head were not firmly attached, I would leave without it. But I left there without my meeting notes. And I immediately, when I got to the airport, I called back and tried to let them know, but they're gone. So, but we had a presentation by a fellow by the name of Dr. Mark Williams, who presented on innovation. Actually, he presented both days. He was the bulk of the seminar. And it was really powerful. And I, it was so good that I said, we really need to have this kind of gathering in Kansas and inviting these, well, the department people. I think the board would, would be very interested in it and find it very valuable. These innovative districts, superintendents, and some of their staff would be, would be really excellent. As you may or may not know, we have a, there are six or seven comprehensive centers around the country. This is a federal program where these, these centers actually provide technical assistance to states. And we have, C-3 has one of their people embedded in our department, Gary Manford. And so Gary would be very helpful in helping us set that up, I'm sure. And as a matter of fact, I voiced this thought before the meeting was over, and Donna Richardson, who's the chair, who, the executive director, came to me and said, if there's anything we can do to help you get that done, we want to do that. So, and I think there's some other states who are wanting to do that as well. I think it would be very, very good for us to, because there is some, there's some deep study and work on this whole idea of innovation in education that is really pretty powerful. And it takes into consideration what we know about the brain, and how it works, and all that sort of thing. So that's as good as I can explain it briefly without my notes. But it was really very good. And I appreciate the opportunity.
Ken, where is that center located, the one that we're part of now, did you say?
Housed at Oklahoma University.
Okay.
In Norman, Oklahoma.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
This meeting was in St. Louis. So I flew from Dallas to St. Louis, and from St. Louis to Houston, and couldn't get home from there. So I had to wait till the next day. So.
We're glad you were there.
Thank you.
John? Janet. Janet Wall.
Thank you. I wasn't going to report on anything, but when Howard brought that up about thanking Peggy, I would like to also do that. Because she was amazingly helpful to me the other day. I received a call that I was going to be interviewed on school safety. They had just talked with someone from Sandy, they were going to talk with someone from Sandy Hook, and they wanted to see what we were doing here in Kansas. And I was pretty sure, I knew, but I wanted to make sure all my information was totally correct. And Peggy was a jewel. And she had three different people from the department call to me. Peggy called to make sure I had everything I wanted. And so thank you, Peggy. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, and how much I appreciate the department people contacting me and giving me this information. I was, it was just really, I really do appreciate it. But secondly, I think, at least, I think all of you received this letter on this handwriting thing. I just appreciate a copy of the response, because I'd kind of like to know, you know, what is going on myself, you know, on this handwriting. So if we could have a copy of that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. I asked Peggy to run off this letter that I received and talked about at the last meeting, when, when I said we went to the ECS meeting, and I was able to talk to some of the Teachers of the Year. And one of them from Utah did the mentoring for teachers that in that state, they allow to come out of business and industry without the pedagogy, and how they then work with them, and they mentor them in the process. And so I asked her if I could have a letter And so I asked her if I could have a letter from her, just talking about the experiences and the challenges that they receive. And it's just a little bit of information that she sent, as we start researching and, you know, Western Kansas isn't a problem for teachers. And, you know, I've been such a staunch pedagogy. But, you know, if we start looking at some ways, as Steve is recommending, I was trying to be open-minded and to think about that a little bit, how would be some different ways that we do some things. But I think we're going to, after visiting with some of the teachers there, and after receiving this, I think one thing we need to keep in mind as we start thinking about different things is that the cost again, and the cost to the schools in training teachers onsite compared to having your employees come ready. And that will be an added expense if we change our mind on some things. But anyway, I sent you this letter. I, that's it.
Thank you. And I would like to mention that I attended the TAZN Conference a couple weeks ago. And Jim, you were there. I don't know if you're going, you can probably give more detail than I can, because I was late in arriving, because I had a meeting here before I went there. But Jenna Roseborough, is that how you say her name, did report some of the information that she shared with us regarding implementation of the seclusion and restraint regulations. And it seemed to be a very productive conference. So I was glad to be there and see the reaction of administrators in special ed area particularly to what's happening in the field right now. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. What was that meeting we were at here in DePica? I'd forgotten all about it.
That we?
Yes. Okay, you just, I'm gonna say as pitiful as me, but, but anyway. It was the folks from, Mr. Brad, what was that meeting that Thursday? You were in Wichita, but you came back for it to interview?
It was the...
That was the TAZN Conference, or it was the Summer Leadership Institute.
No, the people that were here from...
The interviews.
The interviews from the board members. Just forget it.
Which week?
The what? Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, I could, okay, yes.
Say what it was, because I can't remember.
She said CCSSI Capacity Group.
That's the group, we had the group in for three days.
Yeah.
That interviewed at the Abilene Conference Workshop Summer Academy, and then here on how Kansas is doing in the implementation of new standards. So that's what that was.
Thank you. I'd forgotten about that. Well, since we're thanking people, it was no surprise to me when Mr. Schuler talked about the staff here. And I can appreciate that my opinion of everybody that I have crossed paths with, they care about children. That's the focus on everything they do. I called Monday afternoon and asked our communication person, Ms. Kahler, that I needed some information, and told her I wouldn't need it for another week. And when I walked in here yesterday, she had this big spreadsheet that I still haven't looked at. But, you know, I really appreciate everybody here that really are committed to not only our children, but also making this board look good. So thank you.
Dina Horst.
I attended one of the, well, the Summer Academy in Abilene. And we heard a lot about that. So I'm not going to talk about what went on, just to tell you that I thought that it was well worth my time. And I was able to see what individuals are doing in classrooms, and what they were sharing was, I think, very valuable. And I wish every teacher in those areas could experience the same thing. I also have attended the governor's, well, it's not really totally the governor, it's, it was a piece of legislation. It's the K-12 Student Performance and Efficiency Commission. And during that time, and you received a copy of the agenda, and basically, it was just receiving reports. And they did elect the chair and the vice chair. And I didn't think to get out my little, my real agenda. The chair is a gentleman from Wichita, and the vice chair is, I believe, Blue Valley's super, Shawnee Mitchell's, excuse me, Shawnee Mitchell's superintendent. And so it's going to be interesting to listen to the dialogue between the individuals who have been selected to be a part of that commission, because there is a mix of educators, as well as, as individuals from, from, from business and the community. I also, let's see, I think that's probably basically what I've done so far.
Dina, I just had a question.
With the exception of writing bylaws and so on for...
Well, yeah, right. But my question was about the commission. Is the public...
Yes.
It's okay for other people, how many that were not part of the commission were in attendance when you went?
There were a lot of the same folks that we see here.
Okay.
And I would say it was those individuals who follow what goes on in education. I can't say that there were very many individuals from the public that were there. But they certainly are welcome.
Okay, well, good. Thank you. Thanks for going. Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to commend Dina for her work on the bylaws for the Innovative Districts proposal. She did, she did the bulk of the work. She carried the water on that. Thank you very much. All I did was vote for them. So you did a great job. Thank you.
You did more than that, so.
Thank you for thinking that, but I voted.
You had him.
You're very kind. First of all, I'd piggyback on what Jenna talked about in TAZN Conference. Brad, you did a great overview. A big shout out to Colleen Kelly and her staff for the organization and the presentations. They were excellent. Timely topics and very relevant, and good presenters. The thing I got out of the most out of the TAZN Conference is, as any good conference, is the number of participants that were there, who were actively engaged. And let me tell you, those special ed people, they were actively engaged. I saw superintendent's, assistant superintendent's, special ed administrators, but mostly teachers. And had a great opportunity to talk to them and learn what's going on in the classroom. And I'd encourage you to go to this. The staff did a great job. It was, I was very surprised that, and I shouldn't have been, at the quality of the conference that was there. Good job. Kudos to everyone. On NASB, I would just give you an little update. On NASB, is searching for an assistant director to work with Chris. And they are working through a search firm. And we're coming down, I think they're going to have three finalists out of, I think, 179 applicants. They've got it down, I think they'll have it by three by the 27th and of August. And they're going to be interviewing them at that time. And several board members will be in attendance for the interviews. I was invited, but I can't go because we have the Innovative Board going on at, meeting at that day, and I don't want to miss that. But they seem to be doing a really good job, and are very excited about the quality, not only the number, but the quality of candidates. So hearing that we're also in the same position, that people looking for these kinds of positions, that's great. I'm very enthusiastic about what they've done, and I see the same being replicated here for us. So we should be confident that we're going to find good people to be interested in leadership at this level. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The KLFA, which is the Kansas Learning First Alliance, their first meeting of the year will be coming up in August, the end of August. The actual meeting's on August 27th. So that'll be coming up. And we're gonna, the previous evening, Brad and I are gonna kind of do a overview, kickoff webinar overview for them. So that'll be kind of upcoming in the near future. So I'll have some information about that. On their agenda, which is what is on lots of agendas right now, is a little bit of information about the Rose Standards. So I think we'll all be learning more about those, as that's a piece that the Supreme Court has indicated needs to be considered as far as looking at education. So that'll be a conversation with that particular group. My other two, well, one other thing, and then a couple. Speaking of school safety, the Wichita School District has kind of implemented a new piece of training with their school safety that's part of their crisis intervention that I have not seen, but they've done some new work with, and I don't remember the name of the organization, the Kansas organization, the gentleman that came and spoke with us last year, but they worked with him. And so they've done some new training with all of their schools on crisis interventions. So they're, to be commended for that, and really looking forward as far as those pieces are concerned. The other two items I have kind of have to go with future agenda items. So I don't know if you want me to wait, or what.
Well, since you're the last board report person, you could kick off the future agenda items.
Okay.
Requests.
I'll do that. One of them relates to conversation, and we've had conversation with Brad about this even, I think, just yesterday. The Colleges of Education in the state of Kansas, I think, you know, that's something that we, the State Board, works with as far as the Colleges of Education. They have new standards that they are coming out with. I can't remember the initials, but there's new standards. So Sally and I've had this conversation in the coordinating council work, to have a presentation about these new standards and the implications that will, those will have for Colleges of Education. And I know Brad's indicated that we're probably, we're going to look at a presentation to the Board upcoming. This might address some of Steve's concern as far as pedagogy in the Colleges of Education, as far as what these new standards are. So I think it'll be, that'd be real helpful for us to know, to know more about. My other issue that I think certainly could be a future agenda item, I've had some conversation, and this is really a high school item, some conversation with some high school principals as far as math licensure. If you look, and I'm going to preface this talking about science, but if you look at science licensure, science licensure in the high school, anyway, is targeted specific content areas. There is a license for chemistry. There is a license for biology and so on. In math licensure for high school, there's a high school license. And in talking with one high school principal in Wichita, although this impacts all of them, he was able to give me some data, some specific data. But the license that teachers have to have for that high school mathematics license goes all the way through, they basically are within a course or two, maybe three, of actually having a mathematics major. And when he broke down the data and showed the number of teachers that they have that teach those higher-level math classes, and this is a large comprehensive high school, they only need one or two or maybe three of their probably 20 math teachers that need that advanced licensure. And if you look at the license issue that goes on, and knowing my experience from Wichita State, what we are seeing is those students who are going into mathematics, they start with a 612 license. They get to some of those classes, and they decide they don't want to take those last several classes for licensure. They go back to 58, and then they take the praxis. I mean, that's the reality of what's happening. I'm sure that's not isolated just to Wichita State. So I guess the request from some of these high school principals is that we look at maybe a differentiated math licensure, like we have differentiated science licensures when we look at science. So I guess my request, my long-winded request, has to do with looking at that math licensure piece. As far as need, maybe getting data, again, I got data just from one high school, but I'm sure we can look at other high schools. Because the majority of the high schools, they teach Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II, to by far and away the majority of our students. And they do have advanced mathematics, but again, the numbers are much smaller. So I think looking at this licensure piece for the high schools might be beneficial. So that's my long-winded request, and I'm hoping that that's clear.
Thank you. I had been contacted last year about this same issue. So I think it is something we need to discuss. Other requests for future agenda items. Ken Wellard.
I have had a contact from Dr. Don Fast, who is working with the Kansas Reading Initiative with Alexia Program. He has, they have data out now on their success in the schools that they're in. And he would like to present that to the Board in September, if that's possible. So I told him I would ask for a spot on the agenda.
Thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you. Dovetailing hopefully with some of the issues that Kathy brought up. One of my contentions with Common Core is that we still have this mindset that we have this manufactured, born-on date at every kid. I mean, every kid has a birthdate, and so that's how we move them along through the system. And, you know, I don't know enough about how everything fits together to know how that would work with history, or with humanities, and art, and so forth. But I know that in mathematics, the birthdate of the child has very little to do with where they are. And to be a modern math teacher, you have to be able to teach to seven different levels at once. And so I would like to put in a request, it might sound kind of nebulous, and I suppose it is, but might there be some avenues where, in certain technical realms like mathematics, we can kind of strip children away from their birth date and proffer them through the system based on the skills that they acquire? I'm thinking of a conversation I had with Dr. Pozni years ago, when she said she wanted to eliminate grades. Of course, my first thought was A, B, C, D, F, but she was thinking of the ordinal grades, first grade, second grade, third grade. I think there might be a general trend to do this with the computer technology we have now, able to track more things and more data and all this stuff that we have at our disposal. I would put in a request to look for experts in this area, if there are such people who can take what we have to offer in the world of education and disaggregate that, if that's the right word, from the birth date, the born-on date, the manufactured date from our children. Because I know, I can come up with the best lesson for a second, a second grade math lesson, but it's going to be appropriate for that second grader there, and that kindergartner over there, and that fourth grader over there. And that's just the reality. And that's something we need to take a stronger look at.
Thank you. Are there other requests for future agenda items? Okay, then we will move forward, and I think... And I think the next thing on our agenda is to approve board travel. Before we do that, I need to ask Tom Krebs something. You had mentioned a meeting, and I wrote the date down on another piece of paper that I can't find, where the Rose Standards were going to be discussed. What was the date of that meeting?
August 22.
Okay. And it's here in Topeka?
Everest.
Okay, thank you. Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's why I wanted to add that Rose Standards to my travel. I have the confidence that Kansas Public Health on that same date. I want to leave it that that date may change because there's several of us that attend that meeting that may, that are planning on going to the Rose Standards. So I don't know whether we can do that or not, if I can just leave that date on the confidence.
And then just let me know what happens in the interim.
Okay, thank you.
And Peggy, I wanted to add the August 22 KASB meeting to my travel. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. I would like to add the Rose Standards Conference. I've got a conflict, but I'll figure something out. And also the department's annual conference on October the 20th to the 22nd in Wichita.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The KLFA meeting that I have on August 27th, add that.
Jim McNeese.
I'd like to add the department conference in Wichita, just for salary.
Annual conference.
Annual conference.
Deana Horst.
And I'd like, excuse me, to add the Rose Standards meeting on August 22nd. And then August 19th and 20th is another meeting of the K-12 Student Performance and Efficiency Commission. It's in Topeka, right?
Ken Wellard.
Peggy, was the C-3 conference on my travel?
It was not.
Okay, I couldn't remember. I need, that was last Thursday and Friday, just two days of salary. And then I would like to add the K-12 Performance Conference, or as well, meeting as well, that's 19 and 20, I believe, of August.
Any others for the K-12 regional banquet in September? Or is it, I've heard from some of you?
Are you going to do those reservations for us or do we need to send in those little cards?
You can. I've just been working through Sherry Bukavat's here and I can let her know just the?
I'd prefer for you to do mine. I don't know about anybody else.
Do you like that?
Yeah, they're on there.
But anybody else?
Yeah, just go ahead and do mine too.
Other additions. Janet Wall.
Did, you did, if we requested it, you informed Sherry, correct? Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other hands on my computer or in, oh, there is one. Ken Wellard.
Peggy, do you have me down for the K-12 meeting on the 6th, September 6th? Okay, yeah, I need that one down, please.
Okay, this is the last chance. I would entertain a motion then to approve board travel as, with those additions. Moved by Jim McNeese, seconded by Ken Wellard. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have a unanimous 10-0 vote on that. There being no further business to address, I believe our meeting will be adjourned. Thank you very much.